Each being appointments to the Historical Commission. Is there such a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Is there support?
Support.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Krizak?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Castelli?
Yes, motion carries. Back to the regular agenda. Item number four, consideration of the following minutes. Before that, do you want to introduce Sherri, our new cable person?
I'd be happy to. I am pleased to introduce you. This is my from Community Media Network. We are discussing the idea of contract perhaps with CMN for cable casting on our meetings. So, welcome.
Welcome aboard, Mike. Item number four, consideration of the following minutes. Public hearing and zoning board of appeals meeting held Tuesday, December 11th, 2012, and regular city commission meeting held Tuesday, December 11th, 2012. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move the minutes of the public hearing and the zoning board of appeals meeting held Tuesday, December 11th, 2012, and a regular city commission meeting held Tuesday, December 11th, 2012 be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
I support.
Questions, comments, corrections? May we take a vote?
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Krizak?
Yes.
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Mayor Castelli?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is the December 2012 dispersment report. Amy.
Payroll on accounts payable for the month of December was provided to all of you prior to the meeting. Payroll was $54,683.36, and accounts payable was $709,328.2, of which $388,953.68 was payable in tax liabilities.
Any questions on the dispersment report? Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move that the December dispersment report be approved as listed.
Is there support?
Support.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Krizak?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Castelli?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is the consent agenda. Sherri.
Mayor and City Commission, there are two items on the consent agenda this evening. The first is a resolution in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday, and the second is a proclamation recognizing January's Volunteer Blood Donor Month. My recommendation is that the consent agenda be approved.
Is there such a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move the consent agenda be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
Support.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Commissioner Krizak?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Castelli?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is city commission liaison reports, and I see they've mixed them up here, so Commissioner Perry, you're first this time.
Well, this month I was, there was a very interesting transit meeting that went down, the group we went down to with the Woodward Alternative Analysis Group, SEMCOG and, let me find this real fast, SEMCOG and, and the RTA as well as the Parsons Brinkerhawk team sponsored a trip for the Alternatives Analysis Group, which is municipalities from Pontiac down to Detroit. And there's a really interesting article, which I'll see if Scott can post online, that Mary Kramer wrote for the Cranes Cleveland business, that talked about, you know, all of the benefits. What was really nice, we got on a bus and rode down to Cleveland to ride their rapid transit system. So we spent a couple hours on the transit system and then talking to their RTA, and we really learned a lot. It's everything from, you know, their ridership, you know, everything from the increase in ridership that, you know, from 2008 it went from 2.6 million to in 2012 it was up to 4.6 million. We went nine miles in just about 20 minutes, which was really nice. You know, they were very quick and concise stops. It feels, you know, just like it's a very organized system that is a, is, you know, it's clean and just lovely. They also, they, it has, they have studied it and they found out that it has spurred on more than $6 million in new planned development of offices, apartments, condos, medical research centers, and restaurants along this route. And then also the RTA in Cleveland, which, you know, as we all know, in December here in Michigan, we just passed a regional transit authority. And the RTA in Cleveland is different. It is financed by tax, sales tax revenue in addition to the fare box on the transit system. Well, ours will be, is, is still not settled, but it will be funded in a different way. It will probably be fees, which it's something that the voters will vote on, but it'll be fees attached to, I think, our driver, to license plates and vehicle registration. The, they also got a lot of funding through the two major health systems, one their Cleveland Clinic and, I forget the other one. They bought the naming rights, and it's called the Health Line. Cleveland is much like Detroit where they have lost a lot of their, they had a big decrease in population. So they went from 915,000 people down to 400,000 in 2010. So the 915,000 was in 1950. And then, so with that, they're still seeing this ridership is still, have really nice significant increases with this very, with this school system. So that was very cool. I have a complete streets to change topics.
Yeah, while we're on the, on the bus in Chicago, they have that link with your smartphone so you know when the bus is arriving, or they have that same system in Cleveland?
They do. They have the, and that's one of the things I know that is a priority with new systems is to make sure that people can tell the timing. The other thing they have is it tells you how many minutes till a train will be, a bus will be coming. But it was really a nice system, and their RTA, they're very enthusiastic about, it was a really interesting meeting, and I'm happy to provide more information to anyone who's interested. On Thursday, I am meeting with the, their, the group to start working on public outreach for the Complete Streets Study, which Complete Streets is, it's the planned study to achieve equality and convenience and choice for pedestrians of all ages, abilities, bicyclists, transit users, and drivers along Woodward Avenue. And so that's one of the things that I think, you know, it's so important for us in our planning for the city to really think about how to consider that as we're developing our DDA and all of the, you know, with all the important work you're doing to enhance the crosswalk at Woodward and everything, too. And there, and, you know, there have been, you know, the Woodward Avenue Action Association actually also did a really nice celebration of Pleasant Ridge coming back into the organization because they really appreciate that, you know, having our membership in there. So I just want to thank everybody for that because that was a real, that was a neat thing that they did at the December meeting. So, that's all.
I didn't know about.
And then we have school board member Amy Butters here tonight, who was newly inducted last night officially, and she had her first meeting. And I just want to congratulate Amy and Raylon Leaks-May and Kevin Deegan-Crouse and Jim O'Donnell on taking their seats on the Ferndale School Board. Last night's swearing-in ceremony included the mayors and leadership from all of the cities in the district, and really showed that they're embracing, you know, how much the school district is working to embrace the communities. Their focus on community outreach and engagement is one of the key issues that excites me and many of our fellow Pleasant Ridgeers. And I want to thank you, Amy, and all of the new and current school board members for the good, hard work. And Amy will give us an update on school stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Historical Commission, Commissioner Ravino?
There was a discussion on the home and garden tour. No final plans have been made, and they haven't had, do not have a list of homes. They do have some from last year, and there are some volunteers for this year, but they haven't put it together yet. The other item was that they, they had the election of the offices. The chairman is going to be Carol Zupan, vice chairman is John Wright, treasurer is Don Hoffler, and secretary is Brad Bannon. Also, they approved of, for consideration to the city commission, Mr. Dan Hoffler and Mr. James Copen to the board. That's about it.
And those were our two items.
That's correct.
Planning Commission, DDA, Commissioner Bushy?
Well, we finally had our joint meeting with the city commission, and it was well-attended. We had the full city commission attended, and a majority of the planning and DDA was a very productive meeting. What we reviewed is about four months ago, we met with John Ike Angelo, and we set out a priority for the planning commission for the upcoming years. And at this meeting, we just kind of tweaked it a little bit and moved a few things around, but next meeting I have a total breakdown of that list and make sure that everybody's aware of what their goals and objectives are as far as the planning commission and DDA.
I think they retired a minute this month, perhaps, for another joint meeting?
Yes, for another joint meeting, but I think we should have a finalized list as far as what the priorities would, because we achieved it at that meeting, didn't we now?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. And I didn't have great notes, so I'm sorry, I don't have that seen to you for you. But, and then also last night, two meetings, we had the planning commission, DDA. There was not a lot on the planning commission's agenda, but the DDA had a thorough discussion regarding both of the upcoming liquor license issues as far as corks, transfer of the ownership, and then of the new liquor license that wants to be issued for May's restaurant here in Pleasant Ridge. So there'll be some further discussion on Thursday. Obviously, there's a large public hearing. I would support everybody that has any interest or any concerns or any support for that to attend that, and that's this Thursday at 7:00 at the community center here. That's all I have.
Thank you. Recreation Commission, Commissioner Krizak?
Thank you, Mayor. One thing on recreation, I want to make sure everybody's aware that we have a great event coming up this Saturday. It's the Pleasant Ridge Health and Wellness Fair. It'll be held this Saturday, January 12th, from 10:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Pleasant Ridge Community Center. What we're doing here is we're offering a whole list of classes throughout the day, excuse me, with different items for activities for residents and people to participate in, everything from CrossFit training to karate to yoga, excuse me, and other items. We'll also be having lectures based on health and wellness, items of interest, lectures like Balance and Falls, How to Protect Yourself from Those, nutrition awareness, and other lectures throughout the day. So for $5, you can attend one class or one lecture at any time throughout the day, and for those with small children who would like to attend one of the adult classes, there's several classes for children, but anyone who would like to attend adult class can either enroll their children in a concurrent class, or we'll have babysitting available on-site. So we'd ask that if you're available this Saturday and you're looking to kick off your health and wellness plans for 2013, that you stop by the community center. You can register beforehand, or you can register, you can show up for a class. Please contact Recreation Department if you're interested in pre-registering, and like I said, it starts at 10:00 on Saturday. And all proceeds from this event will go towards the Playmakers, Gamesboro Park Playground improvements that the Recreation Committee is currently fundraising for. So, should be a great event. Thank you, Mayor.
Sherri, I meant to ask Senator Gregory yesterday the status of something when I saw him at the swearing-in, but he was pigeonholed in a long conversation I did not get over there. But as people here know, Sherri and I have reported many times over the last year about the legislation adopted at midnight last year combining courts. And now during the lame duck session, there was more legislation adopted. I'm not sure if the governor ever signed it, that's what I wanted to ask the senator. Unscrambling the egg and resulting in if it's signed, instead of having Berkeley and the Oak Park Courts combined, that those courts will remain separate, as they recall the legislation, and then Berkeley and Royal Oak will combine. And what that's going to end up meaning, who knows whether they'll change it again, who knows? But that's the latest and greatest that I'm aware of. I'm not sure if it got signed. Do you recall anything else?
I called both Senator Gregory and Representative Cogan-Lipton before I went off on the holiday break, and I didn't get a call back until the week I was gone. And they had both left messages. What was disturbing, what I found disturbing was that the bill that was introduced that would allow you to do this, first of all, it just created complete chaos for the court that had just reorganized. But there was no notice to any of the other participants of the 45th District Court.
Even though represented by the same senator?
We are represented by the same senator, so I was going to ask him why, if at the very least he should ask some of the other participants about how this would affect them. And I will get the opportunity to do that, so I have not talked to him.
So hopefully by the next meeting, we'll know a little more, but they're unscrambling the egg.
It's just a mess.
Surprise, surprise, it's all about money. Next item is governmental reports. Ms. Butters. Helene's no longer here, so you get to be first.
That's, yeah, it doesn't seem quite right. I wanted to, my name's Amy Butters, and I'm here on behalf of the Ferndale School Board. I wanted to thank Mayor Castelli for coming last night to our swearing-in, and he actually swore me in, so that was, that was very nice. We had Mayor Coulter from Ferndale and Supervisor Squalls from the Royal Oak Township also there to participate in the festivities. And Mayor McClellan from Oak Park had her council meeting at the same time, so she couldn't attend, but it was, it was a really great night, and I appreciate the support of the commission, and I appreciate the support of the residents of Pleasant Ridge throughout the campaign. And we are, the seven of us on the board are really looking forward to getting down to work. And so I wanted to come tonight, and of course invited me to come and to talk a little bit about what's going on in the Ferndale schools. And there's actually a lot. January, the month of January is full, and so I just want to go through really quickly just a few things that I know Pleasant Ridge residents are going to be interested in, and I do have flyers, which I'm hoping I can leave back here.
And Mayor McClellan did send her ever faithful husband a very nice flyer.
Yes, yes, that's right. He did come and read her statement, and it was, brought a little tear. It was very nice. So, I was, and speaking of, Senator Gregory was also present, and Representative Cogan-Lipton, and so it was, it was a special night. And our next meeting, which is one of the, one of the things on my list, our next board meeting for the Ferndale School Board, is Monday, January 28th at 7:00 at Harding Administration Building, and it's, it's a regular meeting. Last night was mostly, you know, ceremonial. We did do a little bit of business, elected officers, assigned committees, and that kind of thing, but Monday, January 28th is when we're really going to get, get into the business of the school board, so we invite everyone to come and, and watch that meeting. So coming up tomorrow night is something that I know a lot of people are going to be interested in. This is kindergarten information night that the Ferndale schools are having. It's tomorrow night, 5:30 to 7:30. This is Wednesday, January 9th, at Grant Early Childhood Center, that's in Royal Oak Township. And this is a great, a great event to come to if you've got kids that are getting ready to enter kindergarten, or even if you have, maybe even getting ready to enter kindergarten next year, if you want to start learning about what Ferndale schools are all about. So this is, this is a really nice event that is being planned for tomorrow. Next on my list here is, Wednesday, January 23rd, is a seminar that is about internet safety, and this is for parents and adults. So even if you're not a parent, maybe you're a grandparent, maybe you have, you know, neighborhood kids that you're interested in learning more about. Internet safety, is your child safe online? So that's Wednesday, January 23rd, 6:30 p.m. at the high school, Ferndale High School. Then also, we have our All-City Extravaganza, which is an annual event, and this is something that is happening Saturday, January 26th at Ferndale High School. And this is a, it's last, most of the day, 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. It's an open house kind of a thing where you can come, you can bring your kids along, strollers are welcome, it says here. There's food for sale, there's music demonstrations, there's different activities, robotics demonstrations, lots of different tables from the different organizations throughout the school, and it's a really nice way to learn about the whole district, not just a kindergarten experience, but the whole district. And so I definitely encourage everyone to come out for that. And then lastly, this is a new event that I don't have a flyer on, and I just learned about today, but it's happening January 30th. It's something called Volunteer Expansion Event. And I don't think it means expanding a volunteer. I think it means that it's specifically for Roosevelt School, which is of course right here in our neighborhood, right here in Pleasant Ridge. And it's a, it's a night that they're putting on to invite people to come to their school to learn about volunteer opportunities there. So if you have kids that go there, or if you don't, if you're a neighbor of that school, if you're looking at maybe becoming involved in our school that's right here in our neighborhood, that's January 30th at 6:00 at Roosevelt, and there would be more information about that on the Ferndale District website. But I definitely thought that Pleasant Ridge residents would be interested in something like that, too, because it would be a great way to, to get some hands-on experience in one of our school buildings. So, if that, there's any other?
Any questions?
Amy, I attended a meeting a year and a half ago where the school board was looking at the possibility of doing something over at the, at elementary school and getting ready to the basketball and putting some game equipment there.
Yeah, you know, that's, it's interesting that you asked me that, because I just watched that meeting on, on, on the tape, just over the, over the weekend as I was starting to kind of get ready for my term, and I was having the same question. I thought whatever did, the, the answer, the short answer I can give, and I will try to get back with you with more details, but the way it was left that night at that particular meeting was, it was going to depend on fundraising from the school's PTA. And so I imagine that that's maybe where it ended up, you know, where, I don't know if maybe there wasn't enough funding raised, or if maybe there's, it's in the works still and it's just taking a while, but I know that those were, that Deana Rochelo, the principal at Roosevelt, had some, she had some pretty interesting ideas.
Actually, they were really great ideas.
They were, it had to do with an outdoor amphitheater, small amphitheater, and it also had to do with addressing some of the Pleasant Ridge residents' concerns about the basketball hoops, and so there were a lot of different things involved with that project. And so, you know, I don't know what the latest is with that, but I will try to find out and get back with you.
Did they have a cost on the amphitheater or design?
No, that, not, not at that meeting. I mean, I imagine there is, you know, there are plans, you know, somewhere, you know, at the committee level, maybe, but.
In my discussion with Gary, I talked to him about it, because of the bond issue at that time was being talked about, it wasn't something that was put into play, and he said that he was going to try to get some of the bond money to do that. Also, there was some number of 26 to 30,000 they had to raise, and he was going to look at that, whether that was actually part of it, I don't know. But I was just curious what was happening with that.
Yeah, I will find out. I know, I, from, just from my limited knowledge of, of the bond projects, I don't think that was included. Because Sherri had asked that exact question during it.
One of the candidates came to one of our planning commission meetings, and I mentioned that it was a perfect opportunity for the school district to take advantage of the improvements that have been promised for 100 years.
Right.
And, yeah, there was, the response was no, clearly, it was just no.
Well, and I, again, I go back to the original meeting where I think that they were hoping that that would be a PTA project, something that would be funded, you know, through PTA funding. So I don't know, I will check, I will try to find out, and I, I mean, at Roosevelt, the bond has focused on new carpeting, a new kitchen, air conditioning, all that kind of, that kind of stuff in the building. I mean, you would think maybe there would have been a little something that, that could have been devoted to that, but I will find out.
Give me the information on the history of that issue.
Right.
I have years of files.
Right. No, I know it's been a longstanding concern of, of the residents here and the, and the neighbors, and, I mean, I think there are definitely solutions that, that are.
Well, given the geography, and given the, the issue that can be resolved, it might be a perfect opportunity for the PTA to approach the foundation about some type of joint project. Not to speak for the foundation, and they'll probably shoot me for speaking for them, but I think that that would be the, you know, a type of project they might embrace.
Right, I would think a partnership.
Especially if it's a matched funding type of thing.
Right, a partnership like that would be very, would be very natural. So let me, let me make a note of that, that the foundation would maybe be a way to, to approach it in terms of.
Be sure to mention, Mr. Commissioner.
And, yeah, I'll be sure and draw your name.
The mayor said.
Castelli referred me to you, so, but no, I mean, I think those are the kinds of things, and we need to kind of be thinking creatively about trying to, rather than just sort of pay lip service and then, you know, not have anything happen. And it is, it is interesting that you ask about that, and I, that I was just recently watching that.
Little great minds think alike.
And even if it's not the amphitheater, something age-appropriate for the site.
Right, and also appropriate for the school, but also appropriate for the neighborhood, and, you know.
Well, that's why I asked, because I thought the concept that the principal had come up with was a really good concept, and I was probably hoping that thing would move forward because I thought it was a great addition for a minority of the children there, but for Pleasant Ridge.
Right, absolutely.
Thanks, Amy.
Okay, anything else?
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Any other governmental reports?
Yeah, I'm Gary McGilvery, I'm your new county commissioner, and I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you as well as all your residents for their support in the past election. It's unfortunate what happened with the redistricting, and that Helene Zach has to move to another direction, and I picked up Pleasant Ridge. Just to give you a little background about this.
Probably unfortunate that she moved out.
I, I do look forward to representing Pleasant Ridge, and if there's ever anything I can do, I'm only a phone call away, and by all means, call me. A little bit about my background, I'm, I've been involved in my local community, which is Madison Heights, for several years. I served on city council there for 25 years, served as mayor for a short time as well. I served on Parks and Recreation Advisory Board over there for 25 years. And the boards that I serve on now out of the county are Public Services, which deals with the sheriff's department, the courts, that kind of thing, and also Planning and Building, which covers any new building upgrades or equipment upgrades comes through that committee, so. I'm vice chair of the public, Planning and Building, I'm sorry, it changed, I was Public Services, they just changed it on me, so. I also sit on the Parks and Rec Board out there, have for the last three years, three years, I guess it is. So I have a real passion for Parks and Recreation programming. Being from Madison Heights, I was the one who worked and got the nature center built and set up over there, and when the city, three years ago, decided they couldn't finance it anymore, couldn't fund it, I got the county to take it over just recently, so now the county runs that. That's one of the, part of the Red Oaks complex, and so if you haven't been there, you ought to stop by, it's going to need 40 acres of land that's got deer, rabbits, you name it all in there, and it's right in the middle of a city, and you don't find that too often, so. And it's right in the middle of a city, and that, you don't find that too often. So. Again, if there's anything I can do, please let me know. One date that I'd like to mention to you is February 16th. That's the Oakland Livingston Human Services Walk for Warmth. It'll be a Great Lakes Crossing. And I'll make sure that your city manager gets some flyers to pass out to you. I haven't gotten them yet myself, so I'll make sure you get those. I sit on that board as well, on Oakland Livingston Human Services. So. Any questions?
Questions? Good. Welcome aboard to us. And as Amy already knows, you may have gathered by now, this is a regular agenda item. Round four to eight, 10 to eight. That's when it's on. You don't need to be here every time, obviously, but you don't need to call ahead if you come.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other items from governmental reports? Number nine, public discussion items not on the agenda. Number 10, the annual meeting schedule for the following commissions, City Commission, Historical Commission, Planning Commission, Downtown Development Authority, and Recreation Commission. Sherry.
Mayor, City Commissioner, I recommend that the schedule of meetings be approved as presented. This is required by the Open Meetings Act, and it's something that the city clerk must prepare every year.
And that is in your memo of January 3rd, 2013?
January 3rd, 2015.
And with respect to some of the meetings, they are contingent on business items, and would be so noted, and maybe subject to rescheduling due to holidays and the like. Is that correct?
I think that's rule of correct. Many of these meetings, even the ones that are marked, for example, July of the City Commission, but often the December meeting of the Recreation and the Planning Commission, those are subject to change. We are required, and we always post those cancellations or rescheduled dates. But this is the schedule that is established at the beginning of the year.
And with respect to City Commission, about July and August are marked contingent on business items, but generally, one of them might be not held. But I don't think we've ever not held both.
Correct. That's correct.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the 2013 annual meeting scheduled for the City Commission, Historical Commission, Planning Commission, Downtown Development Authority, and Recreation Commission be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
Support.
Can we take a vote?
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruzeak?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. But for July and August, you should call ahead, because you may find the door locked. Uh, next item is number 11, consideration of establishing a public hearing on Tuesday, February 12th, 2013, at 7:30 PM to solicit public comments on a proposed amendment to Chapter 42, Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions, Article Four, Offenses Against Public Peace, Section 42-84, fireworks. Sherry.
Mayor, this item was brought to the City Commission's attention at the September regular meeting. And it is a introduction of an ordinance that would prohibit the use of fireworks, with the exception of certain days that the state law does not allow you to prohibit on those days. So the first step in adopting an ordinance is to establish the public hearing. And by doing so, you have a copy of the proposed ordinance in attack at this evening. And basically, what this does, it is in compliance with the state law. You are allowed to prohibit fireworks, the use of fireworks, on days with the exception, with the exception of the days that are listed in this proposed ordinance. And that's New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday, Washington birthday, Memorial Day, Independence Labor Day, Columbus Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving, Christmas.
And the day after?
The day preceding and the day after.
Okay.
So my recommendation at this point is that you establish a public hearing, so that public comments can be solicited to a, for the next step of adopting the ordinance.
Is there such a motion?
Mayor? Oops, sorry.
No, you have it.
Okay. Mayor, I move that a public hearing to solicit public comment on Tuesday, February 12th, 2013, at 7:30 PM to solicit public comments on a proposed amendment to Chapter 42, Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions, Article Four, Offenses Against Public Peace, Section 42 through 84, fireworks.
Is there support?
Support.
I, I do have a question, though. Sherry, on, is this just a rough draft here that we have in front of us?
No.
So as you mentioned, item J on this National Holidays, it says Christmas Day. So is that going to be noted for day before and day after, or is it just going to be limited to that?
Um, it's actually, if you look at the section-
So it says day and before and after on all of them? Is that what it was?
If you look at Section 84, 86-
Yeah.
It says except the day, the day preceding, the day of, or the day after.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Can we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruzeak?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli.
Yes, motion carries. Next item, number 12, consideration of the request by Sergeant Michael Bunting and Officer Jason Nagy to purchase additional service credit from the municipal employee's retirement system known as MERS. Sherry.
Well, Mayor and City Commissioners, you have considered this item, you recently considered this item for Sergeant Bunting and Officer Fern. And that was when they, they asked, the governing body must approve a motion in order for any employee to purchase additional service time through our retirement system, which is the MERS system. And recently, Sergeant Bunting and Officer Fern did approach the City Commission with the request to buy time, and that was approved. Since that time, Sergeant Bunting learned that he needed to purchase an additional seven or eight months in order for him to be able to leave the city earlier, retire from the city. Officer Nagy is now requesting the ability to purchase one year. And by doing so, that would allow Officer Nagy to retire at age 50 with 25 years of service, which is what their retirement system offers.
So he can't buy down the age 50, but he can buy a year of service?
Correct. It's, um, it is not inexpensive for an employee to do this. And obviously, the more years you have in service, the more it costs. So in Sergeant Bunting's case, it has been a costly purchase, but, you know, to his benefit. The cost of this is borne entirely by the employee. So after going, and they also had to pay for the cost of the actuarial to be done, in order for them to know how much it was for them to have to invest. That being said, my recommendation is that the City Commission approve the purchase of the additional service time for both Sergeant Bunting and Officer Nagy this time.
If I may. So now, does this mean that Officer Sergeant Bunting will be able to retire this year?
Yes. He will probably be able to retire before February 1st.
So we'll be losing Sergeant Bunting February 1st?
Well, he has not said that. There, there, in the contract, there's a certain amount of time he must give notice. So, but it will not surprise me if he doesn't, if he does-
I would be disappointed to hear that. That's always been a good-
I think we all will.
Sounds like we're having a retirement party soon.
Yeah, it does.
Does.
Okay. Thank you, Sherry.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the request by Sergeant Michael Bunting to purchase additional service credit from the Municipal Employee's Retirement System, also known as MERS, be approved, conditioned upon Mr. Bunting in incurring the entire cost of the purchase as recommended.
Is there support?
Support.
Where's the party?
Yeah.
Can we take a vote?
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruzeak?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli.
Yes, motion carries. Officer Nagy, is there a motion?
Commissioner Mayor, I move the request by Officer Jason Nagy to purchase additional service credits for the municipal employee's retirement system, also known as MERS, be approved on condition upon Mr. Nagy incur the entire cost of the purchase as recommended.
Is there support?
Support.
Can we take a vote?
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruzeak?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli.
Yes, motion carries. Next item is number 13, starting with appointments, consideration of the reappointments of Mr. Kevin Kelly and Ms. Christine Matthias. Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Matthias.
Matthias, to the Pleasant Ridge Recreation Commission, terms to expire December 31st, 2015. Is there a motion?
Your Honor, I move that the reappointments of Mr. Kevin Kelly and Ms. Christine Matthias to the Pleasant Ridge Recreation Commission, terms to expire December 31st, 2015, be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
A second.
Can we take a vote?
Commissioner Kruzeak?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli.
Yes, motion carries. Next item is number 14.
Excuse me, ma'am, I'm sorry. I just wanted to just tell everybody out there how valuable these two have been to the Recreation Commission. I, uh, I think both of them have done outstanding job. Mr. Kevin Kelly especially, in his time in there, on there, he's really done a great job with the appraisal fair. That's really been, been something that he's worked very hard on. And I look forward to his work on that in the future. And Ms. Christine Matthias, who is recent addition, but even only being on the commission a few weeks, and having just given birth to a beautiful baby, volunteered at our Thanksgiving event, and made that a success. So I'm really excited. These are two great residents that do a great job for the city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next item is number 14, consideration of the reappointment of Mr. David Leylaw, Mr. Michael Decoster, and Ms. Martha Schlesinger to the Pleasant Ridge Planning Commission, Downtown Development Authority, those terms to expire December 31st, 2015. Sherry, you want to take this one?
Yep. Mr. Mayor, I move that the reappointment of Mr. David Leylaw, Mr. Michael Decoster, Ms. Martha Schlesinger to the Pleasant Ridge Planning Commission, Downtown Development Authority, term to expire December 31st, 2015, be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
A second.
Can we take a vote?
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruzeak?
Yes.
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to our add-on item, number 14A, consideration of the recommendation to the City Commission of the appointment of Mr. Don Hefler to the Pleasant Ridge Historical Commission to fill an unexpired term. That term to expire December 31st, 2014. Keeping with the liaison assignments, Commissioner Ravino, would you care to make that motion?
Yes, yes, I would, Mr. Mayor. Your Honor, I move that the appointment of Mr. Don Hoffner to the Pleasant Ridge Historical Commission be filled a partial term to expire December 31st, 2014, be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
Support.
Can we take a vote?
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruzeak?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli.
Yes, motion carries. And who is that replacing? Sherry? This is a, filling an unexpired term? Did somebody step down?
Yeah, we lost, we lost, um-
I'm trying to remember.
Scott Morrow.
Scott Morrow.
Scott Morrow. Yeah, Scott Morrow, who left. And also, um-
Another gentleman.
No, a lady.
Oh.
Shannon Wolf.
Shannon, Shannon Wolf, for the leadership, her term was-
Her term was-
She was term limited.
Yeah.
We thank you to each of them.
Absolutely thank you to each of them. In fact, the historical commission gave a small party for her that I thought was really nice.
Next item, 14B, consideration of the recommendation to the City Commission of the appointment of Mr. James Coppin to the Historical Commission to fill an expired term. His term would expire December 31st, 2015. Again, Commissioner Ravino?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move that the appointment of Mr. James Coppin to the Pleasant Ridge Historical Commission, term to expire December 31st, 2015, be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
Second.
Can we take a vote?
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruzeak?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli.
Yes, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say one thing. These two gentlemen actually live on, on Oxford Boulevard. And I didn't even know they had applied. And I ran into them, and they said, guess what, I'm on your commission. Said, yeah, we're pretty excited about going to your meetings. And I said, well, maybe I think you have to wait until we appoint you. But I'm so happy that you guys are on it. And I, I think they're going to be a tremendous asset to the Historical Commission, because they are extremely fired up about being part of it. And I'm glad to have people like that.
Next, number 15, consideration of the appointment of Ms. Sherry W. Ball, city manager as the city's alternate to the Woodward Avenue Action Association, known as WA3 Board of Directors. Is there a motion?
Um, if I may just add something. When, when we renewed our membership with the WA3, and we appointed Commissioner Perry, one thing that I didn't think about was an alternate in the event that Commissioner Perry couldn't attend, or if there was someone that perhaps needed to attend with her, wanted to attend with her. After the agenda came out, I, in a conversation I was having with Commissioner Ravino, he expressed an interest to-
That wasn't my mind.
...serve in the alternate position.
Go ahead, man.
Why is my phone going off?
Yeah, it was a good ringtone, too. And, um, so I had that conversation with Commissioner Ravino, and of course, that's fine with me, that I wouldn't have to attend the meetings. However, since that time, I've also had a conversation with Commissioner Perry. And she suggested that perhaps the alternate, or the next item of business is our business rep appointment, that one of the planning commissioners slash DDA members would be better suited for, for one of those positions. In my mind, the better of the two positions would be the alternate, because that person could actually attend the meetings along with her, learn what's going on about all of the different items. And we would still then be able to have a business representative attend those meetings where that person's required. So it's been a long time since there's been three people before you-
Whoa.
Uh, three or four people who are willing to serve in the position of alternate. Of course, let me be the very last.
I was going to suggest we stick you guys all in a room-
Right.
And you come out next month and tell us who it is.
Well, Mr. Perry's been attending the meetings, perhaps.
Refresh my recollection. Is the business rep a voting position, or is that a talking but not voting position?
Well, the business rep, the way it used to be, the business rep did not attend the regular, the executive board meetings. But the business rep was the person that had input into things like the complete street or transit. At the time, you know, there were different topics. And they were, the WA3 executive board wanted that person to be someone who owned a business on the Woodward corridor, so that they, so that the businesses would have representation in those topics. So I mean, that was the sole purpose of that position. I believe they vote at the meetings that they attend.
Okay. I'm indifferent, so long as I am not the alternate.
I know.
But I would strongly endorse Mr. Singh as the business rep. So I think if we're going to have someone else, other than the city manager, or an alternate in one of these positions, I would prefer to be it as the alternate. I'm not sure that any of the planning commissioners own a business on Woodward.
Mayor Costelli, there was a very interesting point. You know, Commissioner Ravino and Commissioner Bushy last night brought up a concern they had about some, a planning commissioner who, you know, is a resident, obviously, here in town, who had a topic that he had brought up to me, he had CC'd me on an email. And one of the things with this, this, the WA3 is there are so much, many planning issues that are being discussed, and that's what all the meetings are about. And so I thought, you know, we, it would be such a great position for a planning commissioner slash DDA person to be on this committee also, so that they are, they are able to communicate all of these different things that are going on to, as you guys are making your master plan, and deciding all of these different, very important DDA topics. And, you know, and also voicing their, the, the planning commission, DDA's point of view. Because that is, I mean, this is very much, these are planning issues that are, that are hitting the DDA, the WA3- Because that is, I mean, this is very much, these are planning issues that are, that are hitting the WA Three right now with the complete streets and then also with the transit. And, you know, it's talking about, you know, Woodward and, you know, land use, and, you know, they did a really thorough transit-oriented development study, and that was sort of what spurred on the whole thing with the alternatives analysis for Woodward Avenue, which is what has us out in front of any of the other arteries on this transit thing with the Federal Transit Authority. So it's a pretty exciting group, and it is filled with a lot of planners, and it's filled with, and there are many city managers on there, too. So I just think it would be such a great, because it's, you know, the planning commission is such a great one, and you guys have so many interesting things on your plate right now that I think it could, it could really benefit from a planner on there.
And at the same token, there are two former planning commission chairmans on this body, one of whom is volunteering for this position. So do we want to put over this position till next month and let the three of you talk?
Sure.
Frank, do you have strong feelings?
No, actually, one of the reasons that I had talked to Sherry about it, because I thought the city manager is too busy, and with all the cutbacks you've done in the last couple of years, I thought that would be not a good use of her time. And so I volunteered to do it, mainly because of my background in planning. But I think that having a planning person that's on the actual commission be part of that as an alternate, if they're interested, would be fine. But as, I support you strongly on the business side that Mr. Singh be the business rep because he's been involved in Pleasant Ridge for a while, he's a very good business owner, and he's on Woodward. I think he meets all the criteria for it.
And he's a lawyer, but I won't hold it against him.
I won't hold it against him either.
Is it Mr. DeCosta you have in mind, or has anybody been talked to?
Well, it would very much depend on schedules. I mean, Mr. DeCosta could be very.
I haven't talked to anyone about it.
Yeah.
Then why don't we put number fifteen over and tell them.
Yeah, why don't we go over to.
Fifteen to about the alternate, I think, right, I think that's a pretty interesting suggestion, like I said, because that person could actually attend the executive board meetings and the committee meetings with Commissioner Perry. But I feel strongly that the business representative position should be held by a business owner on Woodward. And Mr. Singh has been a business owner for twenty-some years. He's a good partner to the city, good friend to the city, and he's willing to do it. So that means a lot.
And Mr. Johnson, Mark Johnson, has been doing it, and he has, he, they allowed him to stay on the board over, during our absence, too. So he was able to fill me in on a lot of information. And he is, I think they are finding a position for him on the board because he has been a very integral part of a lot of their planning and development with, between complete street, especially complete streets is one of his passion projects.
Okay, passing over fifteen, going on to number sixteen, consideration of the appointment of Mr. Sonny Singh as the city's business representative to the Woodward Avenue Action Association, known as WA Three Board of Directors. Is there such a motion?
Your honor, I move that the appointment of Mr. Sonny Singh as the city's business representative to the Woodward Avenue Action Association Board of Directors, term to be expired November twelfth, two thousand thirteen, be approved as recommended.
Is there support? Support. We'll get even for him selling me all those losing lottery tickets. May we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruzeck?
Yes.
Mayor Castelli.
Yes, motion carries.
And then I would just like to thank Mark Johnson for doing such a nice job for Pleasant Ridge.
He seems to be very involved, so I even felt that the, that the planning DDA commission meeting yesterday actually brings some input to us.
Next item, number seventeen, continuing with appointments, consideration of the appointment of Ms. Bridget Brown as the city's alternate, millennial representative to the Michigan Suburbs Alliance Millennial Mayor's Congress. Sherry.
Mayor, as you know, we currently have Alex Linco as the city's representative to the Millennial Mayor's Congress. And recently, Mr. Linco said that he would be reducing his involvement with the millennial mayors. He's probably reaching an age where.
He's aging out?
He's aging out as a millennial group. Having said that, Mr. Peter Zach and I and Mr. Linco, we talked about it a little bit, and understanding that our new assistant to the recreation director fits the category of millennial, is very enthusiastic, and she has been taking on a number of responsibilities. And I thought this would be a great opportunity for her to get involved with people of her own age group that are involved in this area. She lives in neighboring communities, so, and Ms. Brown was more than willing to try it. So she will be working for a few months with Mr. Linco.
And a millennial again is what age bracket?
Eighteen to thirty-four.
Is it an age bracket or a year range?
Age bracket.
Oh.
Yeah, it's young.
Bridget, do you swear or affirm you're thirty-four or less?
We need documentation.
Is there such a motion?
Your honor, I move that the appointment of Ms. Bridget Brown, assistant to the recreation director, as the city's alternative, alternate, millennial representative to the Michigan Suburbs Alliance Millennial Mayor's Congress, be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
Didn't even trip up.
Support.
Well, knowing when Alex graduated from high school, he's got a few years before he ages out. May we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruzeck?
Yes.
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Mayor Castelli.
Yes, motion carries. Next item, the city manager's report. Sherry.
I have one item, and that is to remind you that the quarterly coffee house will be held Thursday, January twenty-fourth, at seven o'clock at the community center. Notices will be mailed, January twenty-fourth, seven P.M. at the community center. And then to Mayor Castelli to let you know that it's time to schedule a leadership meeting, and perhaps if we have no other business before the February meeting, might be a good opportunity. So I'll follow up on that date, and that's all I have.
Mayor Castelli, now, do, do we all attend the leadership meet, like, what is the format of the leadership?
Leadership meeting is the mayor, manager, and then the chairs of the junior commissions.
Okay.
Sherry, I would like to suggest as a discussion item for that meeting what the various groups can do to assist in enhancing the auction, seeing the auction will be coming up shortly thereafter. It's a good idea. Other business?
I have something.
Yes.
We have been discussing for three years, maybe, our concerns about the water bills. I think it's time we actually did something about it. We have had our meetings, we've come up with ideas, and now I think it's time for us to bring it to the voters in a strategic way, set up some town hall meetings, do a presentation, see if we're going to do something with it as far as putting on the millage. So my recommendation is that we set up some kind of a town hall within the next couple of months and do a presentation. Scott did a presentation that, for us, that was very informative and gave us ideas of how we can transfer some of this cost, the direct costs into the millage as some of the other cities are doing, such as Ferndale and Royal Oak. There was an idea by Mr. Hartman for us to go to a system like they do in the city of Berkeley. However, our, our structure with commercial industrial doesn't match that, that agenda, so we would not be able to do that. So I think it's, it's time that we did something with the water bills and, and bring it to the voters and let the voters decide what they want to do. And if they want to transfer some of the direct costs to the tax rolls to reduce their costs, then so be it. If not, then this issue would just continue on as it is right now. That's something I think we should do.
So Frank, are you articulating then the twelve town drains portion plus a portion of the other costs?
Yes.
Twelve towns drain portion is
approximately.
A little bit less than a mil.
Yeah, it's about seven eighths of a mil.
And so for the purpose of Scott preparing illustrations, would you be proposing two mils, three mils? What are your thoughts? Would you like to see both presented?
I would think that we need to do both. I think in our talks that we had in our meeting with, with the administration, we were shown the different avenues of the possibility of doing just the twelve towns cost with one mil or two mil. And I think that kind of a presentation is what we need to look at. Are we going to transfer just the twelve?
So twelve towns plus one or two?
Plus one or two, that's correct.
Fingers over here.
Yeah, let's be clear about this, okay. So you want to see what it would look like moving the twelve towns plus one or two mils, so it could be up to three mils?
That's correct.
Okay.
And is that what we decided in the workshop?
Where we were in the consensus on the workshop was the twelve towns plus one mil.
Yeah, I thought we were at two.
We were one plus one.
We were one plus one.
Yeah, two total.
I think the way we left the workshop was, I was going to show you what it would do to property values with low value, high water bill, high value, low water bill.
Well, that's, that's the comparison.
Right, and we have done that. And I'm happy to, you know, show it to you. If you want to do it in a, you know, at the community center, at a public meeting, we can do it that way, too. My recommendation is that this be put to a ballot regardless of whether or not you have the authority to do it as a city commission vote. I believe that this is important enough and a big enough change that you should leave it to a vote of the people.
I totally agree.
That's what Frank's articulating. Sherry had a question.
I just.
Wait, let Sherry finish.
I was just going to say, we do have the time scheduled for the allowable election dates, and the earliest we could get this onto a ballot would be August. My, because we have missed the February, obviously. We're at a crunch time for May. I don't think we'd get an attorney general's opinion back by then. We could do it in August, but I think you'd probably, you'd have additional costs that would be a special election. So I would just recommend you put it on the November ballot. That leaves us enough time to make presentations and for City Hall to answer any questions.
I would agree with the November, if for no other reason, I've always objected to ballot proposals being at odd times when people may not expect there to be an election. Sherry, head the floor.
I, I support Mr. Ravino. I, I am opposed to it, but I feel that it's a voter's choice. And I think it's important that we get this to the voters. And I would take it one step further, and I would make a motion that you start ballot language, and we can just plug in a number so we make sure we don't miss any time phrasing this, and we can make sure we have this done by the November election.
And then, Sherry, when does the infrastructure and millage expire on its own terms?
Twenty fourteen.
Mayor?
Yes.
The part of some of the plan that Mr. Hartman has always presented is very much a hybrid aspect to it, too. You know, that there are two parts to this, where not only is it helping move some costs off of the water bill, making it not do quite as much work, but then also moving towards, not strictly towards the Berkeley model, but hybrid-ing that so that you are changing the, the percentage of, and I'm not going to have the right language, but we know what the, the percentage of what is.
Fixed versus variable.
Yes, thank you. Fixed versus variable is what Scott said. And maybe that could be an alternative that Scott presents, too, because I think that's a very important aspect to fixing this for the long term. Otherwise, we're going to run into the same problem of the costs running up again.
Commissioner Ravino?
Well, part of the presentation that we received was transferring and doing a variable by transferring just some of the fixed costs and leaving the, the actual usage as a separate entity, but just a fixed cost that is the same cost every year transferred over. I think that was like a hybrid that we were talking about. But I think it's, it is time that we do something before next year comes and water bills start getting high and people come in and want to know what we're doing about it.
Sure.
So I think, I think we need to address that issue.
Go ahead, Mr. Frank.
Could we have a refresher workshop on it so we can all discuss and make sure that, because I know it's been a few months, and I want to make sure that we're having all the variables and then we can discuss it because I think, you know, it's such an important topic that it wears everybody out, and we need to solve this the best possible.
If I may, I, we've had, how many workshops have we had in this?
Well, we've been talking about it for not quite three years. It probably feels like ten years.
We've had.
But we've had workshops on it.
And we had specialists coming in.
But I need to be clear what you want.
Yes.
We had specialists come in from our accounting firm that reviewed Mr. Hartman's proposal and various other scenarios.
Yes.
So.
I just don't want to hold a public informational meeting. The purpose of the public informational meeting will be to explain what the ballot language means, what, how it will affect that property. I don't want to do a public informational meeting where you have three different choices because that's not what the ballot is saying.
It doesn't lead to a decision.
No, I agree. Well, I thought we already decided personally. Maybe I misunderstood the whole process.
I thought at the end of those study sessions, we were all leaning towards if we did anything being a ballot proposal for switching it to the tax because.
One plus one.
Okay.
Even though for, for a lot of the properties, for a lot of the properties which are big users.
Yeah.
It will be a push.
Right.
If I'm a big user, and if you push it from my water bill to my tax, it made a difference of about twenty dollars a year.
Right.
But it also made a difference that, absent the bozos in Washington doing something unforeseen, it would make some of my costs deductible. So to that extent, it might deliver some relief. But people shouldn't think necessarily, at least among the big users, that pushing it to the tax bill from the water bill is necessarily going to lower their cost, especially when the big users are those with the bigger houses, with the bigger taxable values, especially those who have bought their houses more recently than I did in nineteen eighty-five. But unfortunately for them, they bought them before the meltdown of the last four or five years. They will find, I think from the data, that their cost will remain about the same. A part of it will be deductible, and certainly having the twelve towns drain part be deductible may be more palatable to people. But I don't know that we need another workshop before this presentation, otherwise we're going to be scheduling meetings and top of meetings, and we'll be up against the deadline for November ballot.
Right.
Right. I don't want to delay it if at all possible, but I would like to say one thing that, once again, this takes us from a usage-based system to something totally different than what this system, in my opinion, should be.
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Well, not only yours, that's the administration's recommendation, the financial consultant's recommendation, the auditor's recommendation, they will not endorse what you're attempting to do.
Well, not what I'm attempting to do. I, I'm just saying it should be go to the voters.
I understand. I agree.
I do not support, I do not support the issue that it should not be based solely on consumption.
Right.
Okay.
And I would differentiate in my mind between the twelve towns drain portion on that.
And I respect that, I do.
Versus the other. Commissioner Kruzeck?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would just want to wholeheartedly support Commissioner Ravino's intention to, I, do something. I feel like it is something that the residents of this community expect action on. They expect us to at least investigate opportunities, and I welcome that wholeheartedly. One thing I do agree is the necessity, and I think it would be very informative to have something of a town hall based on the ballot language. What was very informative to me personally during our workshop meetings was, were some of the calculations, once they were put in on a per-resident basis. I think that was very informative for me. I think that would be very informative for residents if during a portion of the presentation, we could take examples and show the residents how different formats would affect their water bills, tax rates. And even if that information was offered online, where maybe residents at home at their leisure could just punch in their own numbers and see how that worked out, I thought, I think that would be really good.
Scott, didn't you have some sort of template, if I'm recalling correctly, that.
We do.
Wouldn't allow somebody to be able to do.
But we're only going to show this one method.
I understand, but a template that if we do three mils, this is.
Absolutely, yes.
Right. And I also agree that the ballot language, it should be put to a ballot, and the residents should approve or disapprove this, this attempt. So I welcome this this year. I think this is a good topic for us to address this year, and I support Commissioner Ravino in bringing it up this evening. Thank you. Thank you.
So should I make a motion then, that we start ballot language procedures?
Well, I had a question first. When would we expect?
You can make a motion.
Okay.
Anybody support it?
No.
Support it, Sherri, then I can ask my question.
Well, I made a motion.
Oh, okay, you said I support it.
I'll support it.
Um, when do the assessed values come out?
Uh, early March.
So...
No, not March?
February.
So maybe early March is the time to look at that, because then when people use Scott's template, they'll have their most recent taxable value right in their mailbox.
That's fine, yep.
Uh, so at a date to be determined, uh...
Date, well, date, right. And then I also mentioned that we could have Sherri, give Sherri the authorization to start ballot language for a, whatever number she wants to plug in.
To bring ballot language back to you for approval.
For approval.
Correct. But was there another part of that motion I missed?
No.
That's all I wrote, okay.
Yeah, I didn't really, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the motion.
Oh, you want to repeat it? People wonder why Sherri drafts motions for us.
What I have is that Commissioner Bushy made a motion that the city administration begin to develop ballot language for this, for city commission approval regarding water transfer to the tax roll.
Thank you.
And that a community town hall meeting be scheduled for sometime in March, date to be determined?
Yes, thank you.
Take that as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Frank, you support?
Absolutely support it.
Okay. Amy, you'll figure out what we said later? Can we take a vote?
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisziak?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. Any other, other business? Any motions to adjourn?
Could I ask a question before I made the motion?
No. Motion to adjourn can never be debated. Must be voted on.
I had a, an item of interest mentioned by Commissioner Crisziak, but it may be something, I don't know if you want to bring it up this month or if you want to wait?
Well, I, I asked last week for our city manager, Sherri, to look into what we would have to do as a city to draft a human rights ordinance similar to some ordinances that have been constructed and approved in neighboring communities. Ferndale, Huntington Woods, Royal Oak, most recently. I felt like it was something that I would like to at least see, see investigated this year and at one point that we could bring to this table for approval. I feel like with what our city manager has been busy doing over the last few days as far as preparing for several meetings this week, that bringing that to an agenda item to this meeting would burden her and wouldn't really give us as commissioners the opportunity to discuss that. But it is something that I would like to at least have at this table at some point in the near future.
Well, I would recommend that if Royal Oak is currently drafting one, that we wait until Royal Oak drafts one and, and then at that point, take a look at whatever their finished product is. As a matter of taking a type of ordinance that, you know, broad brush tends to cover the same types of protections that are provided by both state and federal law anyway. And I'm not sure what the remedy would be for violation of a local ordinance. And Sherri did forward to me a copy of your email, and I'm not even sure what some of the categories that are described in there would be. I understand Royal Oak is looking at banning discrimination based on source of income. I don't know what that means.
Right.
Does that mean we can't have an ordinance against panhandling? I, I can't think of what source of income discrimination is. One of them was educational association, and I'm going to diss Wolverines to my dying day.
Yeah, well, one of the things that...
Before we start spending money on lawyers, let's wait and see what their finished product is, because the devil in those, the devil in those types of ordinances are in the definitions and in the remedies.
Yes.
And if somebody else is taking that laboring ore, I'd rather see us wait and see them finish it, and then we can look at their finished product and see if it's something we want to copy or copy two-thirds of or whatever.
Yes, exactly. And that's, I appreciate your comments on that. And one thing I, I would want to be in concert with this governing body, with our city manager, with our city attorney, is starting off maybe as broad as we can, and then what is acceptable, what is, are we comfortable with in Pleasant Ridge? I'm not saying we have to mimic exactly what Royal Oak has done, what other communities have done. But I do think this is an opportunity for Pleasant Ridge to state, you know, our principles and, and our positions on protections for our residents from discrimination. And I know one thing that drove me to suggest to Sherri, you know, that this might be something I would like to bring to our commission, you know, is that I have never lived in a community that is more accepting of anybody than Pleasant Ridge. I, I feel this is an incredible community, incredibly accepting community, and it, it's, I'm so proud to live here, and that is one of the main reasons. You know, some people say, well, if, if Pleasant Ridge is so accepting, then why do we need an ordinance to back that up legally? Especially as you mentioned, there may be protections at the federal or state level. For me, it's a pronouncement of our, our ideals and, and it's, it's really a protection of, you know, our citizens from discrimination, but also it's an announcement of who we are as, as a, as a community. And that's kind of the, the ordinance that I would help, I would want to craft with the cooperation of this governing body. Like I said, the input of our attorney, our city manager, and our residents. So that's kind of how I would like to, you know, introduce this to Pleasant Ridge.
From my perspective, this is a city who lives non-discrimination every day. And this or type of ordinance was suggested once before and then withdrawn by the proponent of it on the basis that we didn't need it. Royal Oak is different, Ferndale's different, in the sense that they, in all the other cities that you've mentioned, have a, a high degree of employment base. It's, we have maybe twenty businesses. So we're really dealing with, from the standpoint of the types of, of ordinances and statutes that get drafted are usually either employment-based discrimination or, you know, real estate transaction discrimination. I don't know any evidence whatsoever that Pleasant Ridge, at least in recent decades, has any real estate discrimination. And never heard anything about employment-based discrimination, but given the fact that we don't have many employers, that's not, you know, high on our, on our radar.
Right.
But again, whatever we do, I would recommend that we let somebody else take the lead laboring ore, and then when we're talking about emulating something that talks about source of income discrimination, we at least know what they have in mind.
Correct.
And Wolverines, forget it.
That's fair. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other, other business? Any motions to adjourn?
So will.
Support? Call a favor?
All right.